We're being here tonight. I know it's much of a rush and some folks' calendar to come out on a rainy night instead of being here this morning. But there were a number of issues that caused us to think that it might be more productive to have this meeting tonight with everybody in attendance as opposed to perhaps this morning, where it does, some key people missing. So on behalf of the commissioners, we thank you all for kind of recalibrating your schedule. Where my folder is, is in this seat?
I want to take you on your desk.
I'm almost ready to start. I want to go a little bit out of business. I asked Judge Vanderbor to join us this evening. Appreciate you being here, Judge. And the reason is, we just wanted to give a kind of a public update on some private discussions that have been going on regarding the county's participation. The county's participation in the Maltic County Juvenile Detention Center arrangement. Folks have heard a little bit about this, I know, here and there over the years. The MCJDC is essentially a judicial obligation with Lincoln County, Fairfield County, Perry, Hocking. And the judiciary of those counties created it from a long time ago with Dr. Brown and many others. And so the judges need to be participatory in terms of what's going on with that Juvenile Detention Center. And Judge Vanderbor certainly has been. Three years ago, we went through some extremely difficult tumultuous negotiations to recalibrate the contributions that the counties were making to operate that center. Our contribution at that time was on track to hit $1.1 million for a year. And at the end of those tumultuous negotiations, our share of the contribution was reduced to, say, right around $600,000. Very, very difficult to get from one point to the other. At that time, when we concluded those negotiations, we knowingly left a little meat on the bone as to try to sand off some of the hard edges that had developed during those discussions. For example, we left in the deal what we referred to as the $100,000 roundup. And so what that means is when you do the participation usage calculations, if our participation number would be 501,000, we agreed in the context of that deal to round that up to the nearest hundred and then the basis. So in theory, that could be a $99,000 issue. By the same token, if our calculation was 598 and we round up to the nearest hundred, it might only cost us $2,000 in a given year. But in any event, the $100,000 roundup was in there. The services being provided by Fairfield County Auditor's Office were in that deal three years ago uncompensated. And Fairfield County is not required to provide that service. Technically, by default, the largest county in the membership to be Lincoln County is required to do that, but we kept that in there three years ago. So now that deal's coming up and being negotiated this year or whatever. And we're real close to having kind of a new deal on that. It's not written down yet, but I did want to take an opportunity to just kind of let folks know where I think we are, at least where Lincoln and Fairfield are. Probably Perry too, because I had a nice conversation with Commissioner Ben Carpenter this week. But elimination of the $100,000 roundup. And then the phasing in of an administrative fee that compensates Fairfield County for the services that are being performed by the Auditor's Office. Lincoln County's, you know, I wouldn't use words like happy or sad or angry or any of those words. But I think we're there with Lincoln County on that, on those issues. So I just wanted my colleagues to be aware of that status. The full MCJDC Trust, Board of Trustees and Board of Commissioners will all be advised of that progress made, if you will, between Lincoln and Fairfield on Friday at 9:00 and then again 10:30. Nothing's written down. Nobody pinkies for on anything. So I don't think that Hocking or Perry should feel jilted by their exclusion from those discussions at this juncture, particularly given some context, which is going back three years ago when things got really hot and tumultuous and people got called names, just me and Perry and Judge. We got called names. Nobody else got called names. But anyway. Hocking and Perry actually asked us to step aside with Lincoln and have the big dogs get this problem settled and just bring back a solution. They asked us to do that three years ago, so I don't think they'll be, you know, nose out of joy if that's the way this kind of comes down. But I wanted to certainly thank Dr. Brown. I think when your letter was first coming out, I don't think I was the most enthusiastic person in the room, but it has played out beautifully. Thank you.
Good for Fairfield County.
And I just don't want to be here for two hours. I don't want to go through your whole history with MCJDC, but your recent efforts are very much appreciated. Certainly the judge, all you went through, what you did three years ago, which kind of laid the foundation for once again improving this situation. You have been a tremendous partner with the Commission throughout this process. My colleagues, and I know, you know, you all have been involved in conversations, whether I wanted you to or not, that I think turned out helpful to moving this process forward in a positive direction. So I just, I think a lot of people have participated in rightsizing the relationship. For those who were around three years ago, you'll know there were moments when it seemed impossible. And then here we are today. So feel encouraged by that. I also checked during this process because of some questions that came up. It seems that the debt payment on that building, last one, might have been in December. And that's kind of a piece of good news. The last thing on that update of MCJDC negotiations is Commissioner Bub from Lincoln County. And I also agree to what we're calling a drop sentence in the new three-year deal, which forecasts the need, the propriety of doing a kind of a dissolution agreement in the next three-year deal. And what we mean by that is just kind of laying out what, in the unlikely event that this district were to dissolve at any point in the future, we think it would be helpful to have a discussion about what that looks like when emotions are not high, when nobody is threatening to depart, when it's unnecessary. It's probably an easier time to have that discussion. And it may not be too complicated, but when we were advised by council three years ago as to what a dissolution would look like, we were, I won't get into specifically what legal advice we were given, I'll summarize it, this is not going to be pretty. Different words were used. So anyway, with that, I wanted to get that out and let people know what was going on there. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And if in the list of people included on that, that I may be neglected to mention as being a part of the team that has brought us to this wonderful moment, please remind me who aren't forgetting. Any questions for me on that?
So is Judge Vanderbor going to speak or did you ever come here just to hear you talk?
Judge, please.
A reminder that juvenile court's guiding principles are first and foremost public safety, followed by youth accountability, and third, skill building. And we would love to say to you that our programs developed a community where we don't need juvenile detention, but we do, and we prioritize our community's safety. So there is a need for a juvenile detention center. We're fortunate. We have one in our county. It's a good facility. And, but the reason we got here today is that the county commissioners and county has supported juvenile court in processes like the reporting center, which is a step before detention. So we've implemented, with the Commissioner's support, programs which allow us to keep our youth further away, but keep our community safe. But when we do need it, we use it. So thank you very much.
And I appreciate being here, Judge. The purpose for me inviting the judge was to thank her. But kind words are also appreciated. Any other questions, comments or concerns on that issue?
Good work. It's, you know, it shouldn't go unsaid that throughout all of this, over the past five years now, Commissioner Davis has led the charge. Judge Vanderbor was at his side for the rough parts of it. But it's a, it's a good bit of work to make these things come about. And so you should be recognized for that as well.
I am appreciative of the fact for all of us that if you took all of our salaries, combined them all for the last five years, this one deal more than pays for them. So that's good. Back on our regular agenda. Judge, I know you don't need permission from us to leave, but you have it. At this time, the Commission sets aside an opportunity for voters or taxpayers to address the Commission. If you would like to do so, please begin by stating your name and residential address. We do have a three-minute guideline, which we would appreciate your courtesy on. If you go too far over that and start repeating yourself, then I'll probably ask you to conclude your remarks. Is it, I'm sorry? Oh, and if you would, there are folks, not that many tonight. Normally, there might be, say, 20 or 30 people joining us remotely. There's just a few joining us remotely tonight, but in order for those people to hear what you all have to say, it would be appreciated if you would come to the podium for those remarks. Under those terms and conditions, is there anyone who would like to address the Commission at this time? Sir?
Okay, did it work? I'm Josh Barry, address 5320 Canal Road, Pleasantville. I first want to thank the commissioners for coming to our solar town hall meeting, if you want to call it. Last week in Pleasantville, we were, as citizens, we were pleased to see you guys there and hear what all was said and some doozy of questions that were asked later. But I'm here to just kind of express kind of some concerns that I have with that project of the Eastern Cocktail in my township of Walnut. A lot of it, you guys already know and are aware. I just kind of want, you know, as a resident, as a farmer of that area, I would like to just kind of give some, how I feel about it. So a lot of it, as far as farmland preservation, we have a lot of land there that is forever preserved for farming, mine included. Several family relatives included, right in the heart of all of this. You know, that's something you guys and even the colleagues before you had pushed for and did a great job with. I would hope you would continue to consider that when the time comes, make a decision on this. Because this is the direct opposite of farmland preservation. And what concerns me the most in not just our township, our county, or our state, but as a country, the amount of farmland we're losing is just astronomical. In central Ohio, around the Outer Belt, especially, the amount of farm ground that is just being taken away and sold left and right for development. It's really, really concerning. And it's concerning to me for my kids, the next generation that I want to turn over to farm, and even some of my other neighbors in the neighborhood that are in the same boat. We've got a lot of acres signed up for this solar project. And it would take a lot of ground out of production, and not just any ground. These are, this is some of the best ground in our county. And why so much of the best farm ground is where these solar sites are being placed? I don't know. They're not always beside a major power grid either. So I just don't understand why we can't relocate other areas, less producing land, less value land, all these industry rooftops, warehouses that are going up left and right. I would just really like to, you know, for you guys to consider that. Because I don't feel there's, there's any voice for agriculture right now. And money talks and money is buying up land for other resources besides farmland. And I don't know, it may sound funny now, but who's to say 30 years at this rate of the land being taken, is our food security going to be in jeopardy? Because this is a nationwide issue, especially in the Midwest. And I think it's very, very alarming. And it's more than just not wanting to look at these hideous things. I'm past that. It's, it's more of where is our food going to be early in the future at this rate, at this capacity?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the Commission at this time? Please.
My name's Lisa Thomas. I live at 4718 Baltimore Somerset Road, Pleasantville. I have made a tape of my comments because it's too emotional. After many years of owning a third-generation small business, in 2017, it was finally time to sell our business, downsize our home, and get back to peace and quiet to enjoy retirement. Because of many years of being self-employed and just living life these days, my husband and I were starting to have mental and physical problems. During the first walk-through of the house we bought, I remember sitting on the front porch, looking at the view and feeling a sense of calm. We felt like we were meant to buy this house. There was an instant connection to the wide-open fields, the feeling of decompressing and releasing all the stress and anger. The community was similar to my upbringing, hardworking, very good people, simply living life. My friends and family come over. They often say, what a beautiful setting. As a hobby, my husband, for a time, detailed cars. I cannot think of a person that visited our home that did not say, what a beautiful and peaceful place to live. We enjoy having a different and ever-changing view as the seasons change each year. Each season has its own beauty, a new crop growing every year, understanding how hard farmers work and how valuable this farmland is to our community. Enjoying the country and watching nature is like therapy for the soul for both myself and my husband. As we were sitting on that very same front porch, watching nightfall, in May of 2022, a neighbor stopped over and gave us the news of a possible solar project surrounding our home. Since May, I have been very sad and angry about what is happening. It has affected me profoundly. I am very distracted and not able to live life for each day. In my research, I found solar panels are killing the very birds I attract to my backyard. Needless to say, I am very opposed to large-scale solar farms. I simply do not want or need this stress on my life again. This sort of thing will destroy the very reason we moved here in the first place. We prefer the grain in the fields planted by the farmers in spring, not the Green New Deal coming from Washington, being funded by our tax dollars. Judging by the size of the crowd at last week's meeting, we are not the only ones that feel this way. Please help us save our farmland and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Commission at this time? Please.
I have some crankouts, but my computer is out and I have my notes. Commissioners, thank you for listening. My name is Margaret Pempo. My husband and I, he's out of town. We live at 10134 Lake Road, just northwest, north-northwest of the proposed Eastern Cotton Tail Supplight Project. In general, we are true believers in landowners' rights and progressive energy possibilities. However, due to the high yield farmlands and the extremely critical waterways and the endangered animals and bugs needed to help those endangered species, we are not in favor of this project. In 2019, we were also approached by solar companies regarding our land. And we know and understand the financial temptation. Our Fairfield neighbors, who have maybe considered it, nevertheless, we turned the solar people down. As a background, I'm educated as a botanist and I work as a dentist. I can completely understand firsthand the composites and plastics of solar panels and from the films that run off on those panels and the effect the solar viability and efficiencies have. And the maximum efficiency right now is probably less than 50%. And how their microclimate will affect nearby waterways and the bugs and plants and the animals. And I have some recent studies that I can give to you, but my computer, I could email them to you. We, when we purchased our property, our real estate paperwork was really tough on the preservation of indigenous spotted owls in the Indiana back. And I'm surprised it didn't call out the local eagles that we see from our property as they're flying down from the south to us. And I can guarantee you, the nests are really close to that proposed property project, I mean, that solar project. And did you know that solar panels, due to poor efficiency, give off ambient heat and that the panels themselves can get as hot as 149 degrees Fahrenheit in the summers? However, they are most efficient between 59 and 95 degrees. And because they are not efficient, they retain heat, which affects the animals nearby and the bugs and the plants and profound ways in these living creatures survive on very limited temperature ranges. So these same bugs are vital for the endangered animals that our real estate property referred to and the eagles that it didn't. Our other concerns in the relationships that close by waterways, the water tables and the runoff. And within one mile, we have Walnut Creek. Within four miles, we have the main Ohio fishery. And within Buckeye Lake is even closer. Simply put, learning from other solar projects like the EDF Madison County Fox squirrel solar project, we learn numerous issues that have arisen and have caused revised codes and protections for these simple, as simple as cut and fill, and which we know will affect these, the water table issues will arise from this. Our third and possibly most pressing issue for Americans and especially Ohioans, why is it that the top 75 to 100% of the best soil, and we have a chart for that, in farmlands are being targeted by the solar companies? Solar wants to use the most productive, the most tiled and the substantive strength in the soils and the flattest properties. And of course they do, because it is well-prepared, the tiles are drained, and the cost of the solar companies, it costs the solar companies less money to stabilize and land for the, it's important for these event panels and the weight support structures. But let them find the land that doesn't, isn't the best and is not perfectly flat, and let them pay for their 50% less efficient panels somewhere less productive for the farmers. Ohioans and frankly, Americans can't afford to keep losing all farmland. So we understand that this project has high, high-end tough decisions. And we are very appreciative of you three, because I know sometimes it can keep you up at night when you have to make these tough decisions like the one the judge and you all worked with. Nevertheless, women of character made really hard decisions and we're grateful for our alliance with men and women of character. And we move that here specifically for that reason, because I live in a place where we didn't have men and women of character. So I know a lot of this is not substantive tonight. We don't have a lot of our research articles. I do have some. But we are expecting to have some of our friends and neighbors and people of Fairfield's, each Commission meeting, to report more substantive information. And it's just early for us to be doing this because we weren't aware in advance. So thank you.
Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Commission at this time? We do thank you all for coming. I think for at least a couple of you, it might be your first time coming to a Commission meeting. And so I should mention that when we have these sessions, we don't debate. We don't argue with people who bring us opinions. And if you were here for our morning meetings, you would know that we really want to. It's designed to be a time when we listen as opposed to arguing with people about them. That being said, something that you might have observed here tonight, and you'll probably see as this process moves along. When we have a meeting, there will be structure. There will be organization. There will be a beginning and there will be an end. So we just don't really do the free-for-all thing. And particularly as those meetings occur, as this process matures. We certainly don't have like members of the audience going back and forth at each other. Just things like that. There's structure to what we do. Designed to make people feel comfortable in the environment and also to ensure that people are safe and that things don't get done that ought not be done in meetings where some people's opinions or their emotions might be running strong. But on behalf of the Commission, we do certainly appreciate you all being with us tonight. Thank you. Legal, anything on legal?
Briefly, Commissioner.
Please.
The local agricultural easement purchase program agreement that was tabled last week, the changes that were asked for by the commissioners have been made by ODA. So that was approved and I approve some documents.
Thank you. Just a quick question on the law as it relates to what we're going to pass tonight. My understanding is that this is kind of an umbrella agreement in that the specific authorization for the specific acquisition of easements to preserve farmland would be another resolution on a property-by-property basis. Is that accurate?
It is.
So, thank you for your work on that. And, you know, I know the commissioners were clear, I thought, anyway. Guess some people will hear what they want to hear. But our concern wasn't that farmland shouldn't be preserved. It should. But it was also that there's naturally a balance to be achieved. And we certainly want to convey that as well. Administration?
On that same note, Commissioner Davis, appreciation to Tony Vogel and Rick Seabrack and the Engineer's Office for their work in reviewing the properties that have been promoted.
Yeah, and I should have mentioned that too. I do appreciate you guys chipping in and giving us thoughts on that. And I'm not going to try to remember the specifics or the details of a situation that occurred some years ago. I was involved in it, but I just don't remember the details. But it was something along the lines of somebody wanted to run a water or sewer line down 37 and couldn't. And, you know, that was, that was a problem. And so we want to avoid those kinds of problems in the future.
All right. Eric, the update from the 30.6 million received, 22.2 has been appropriated.
22.2 has been appropriated, 11.3 expended, and 4.3 encumbered or obligated. Last week, Governor Mike Dwyane gave his annual state-of-the-state address and announced many of his budget initiatives for the upcoming biennium. And CCAO did share a number of categories that they were highlighting that he was supporting. It's also in the review packet if you want to read that in greater detail. But I'm going to highlight a few here that we have had conversations on. Full funding for indigent defense. So the Office of the Public Defender will receive increased funding to fully reimburse counties for the estimated cost of indigent defense. And fiscal year 2024, the budget adds 22 million to the current appropriation for this purpose and additional 5.8 in fiscal year 2025.
All right, we'll see how that goes.
Jail construction and renovation. So there's 25 million in capital grants each fiscal year to local jails around the state for construction and renovation projects. So we're going to keep our eye on that and see what we may learn or be eligible to apply for there. This is, this funding is supplementing the 50 million appropriation in the state capital budget.
So could I speak on that briefly on that issue? Ani and I talked about that and we talked about it briefly just in the spirit of some of the ideas that are floating around about improvements that might be made to the jail constructed in 2017. After Ani and I talked, I did find myself curious about that pod player to be named later, so to speak. That's probably out of reach. I know it's certainly not necessary from a capacity standpoint. But I don't know. If you kind of maul over those issues and things, I would be interested in your thoughts about whether the math might be, you know, too good to be true, so to speak. Probably not, but I found myself curious.
All right, local government fund. So there is a proposed increase at the local government fund's share of state chair of taxes from 1.66% bonus to 1.7. It is an increase, so that is good news there. And it would result in about 12 million more each year. So it is movement in the right direction, but certainly not a restoration to the previous level. Next generation 911. So Department Administrative Services has a new line item to support that with an appropriation of 28.18 million and 24 and 17.76 million and 25. This funding is to support equipment upgrades. And CCO is working with the legislature to address funding for ongoing operating costs as well. Mark's Governor proposed budget allocates over 28 million and 24 and 30 million and 25 to assist counties with Mark's user fees. And John did a little quick math for us on that front. Do you want to share that, John?
Sure. Sheriff's office was approximately 36,000 user fees per year. We're about 4,000. Major crime is about 4,000. And then, you know.
When you say we, I don't know.
EMA, sorry.
No, it's all right. I knew what you meant, but.
Yeah. And there's some other users. The county engineer is going on very soon. So they would have an additional fee this year that they could not have. And obviously huge impacts to the local township fire departments, village police departments.
Positive. Child care, the governor proposed an income eligibility increase from 142% of the federal poverty level to 160%. It's estimated this will give more than 15,000 additional children access to the publicly funded childcare. Just for a frame of reference, a parent of two children will be eligible for publicly funded childcare while making up to 1772 an hour. Right now, that level is at 1573. Children's services, the executive budget proposes an increase of 25 million in fiscal year 24 and 35 million in fiscal year 25 for the state child protection allocation, which directly funds placement costs and administration for children and services, children's services at the county level. This is a big one which we're all watching and seeing how it's going to play out and develop, but the creation of a new department of children and youth. So taking existing programs that are several state departments and reorganizing them under that new agency with a total budget of approximately 2.3 billion. And this will include childcare, family and children's services, and early childhood education. On the senior services side, the Department of Aging will receive a one-time ARP appropriation of 40 million for the healthy aging grants to help seniors stay in their homes as long as possible. These funds will flow through the commissioners as it's now stated in the governor's budget. So we will look to see more information on that as in the final budget. Broadband and 24 Department of Development budget includes several broadband deployment appropriations, 105 million in federal funds for the broadband equity access and deployment program, and 267 million from the ARP Capital Projects Fund. And fiscal year 25, 30 million will be made available from the Broadband Digital Equity Act program. On the infrastructure and workforce side, the Department of Development budget also includes funding for a new all-Ohio Future Fund to support infrastructure and attracting businesses, enhance business growth and retention, and encourage workforce development. And on that front, we had been advocating that we be able to get some funding in the state budget for the workforce center. And we did get a little bit of an update just recently on how that's kind of playing out and what the budget had set aside for career technical schools.
Yes. Commissioner Fix, Senator Schaefer. Right now, that $300 million is tied to career tech centers, which we are not a career tech school. And he said they're going to look a way to amend it to be able to allow some of that funding to go for our workforce centers. It's very encouraging and shows a path forward for us to be able to do that considering that the governor mentioned the workforce center as one of the three schools he visited. After he mentioned the $300 million, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get.
So the governor and I had a conversation back and forth regarding that. And he was under the understanding that all the money could be used for that. So, but again, here we are, right?
We will certainly appreciate any work they can do to clarify that.
Well, we've got some deep work. Thank you, Commissioner. And I want to also give Commissioner Fix. My colleagues, Commissioner Levysey and Commissioner Fix have been more involved than I in trying to influence the content of the state biennial. And I wanted to give Commissioner Fix an opportunity to comment on that as well.
Well, so did have a good conversation with Senator Schaefer. He is supportive of our efforts. Appreciative of Fairfield County kind of leading the way in workforce development. Have had subsequent conversation with State Representative LaRae. And he obviously is very supportive and has a position of influence within the state government at this point. And so this coming week, meeting with former Congressman Savers in the Ohio Chamber to garner their support as well.
Thank you. Appreciate both of you all's work on this. And I know it's a process. Kind of starts with the governor's pitch and then it goes through the legislative process and comes out the other end.
As for the CCO, I was, I was a little bit disappointed that the efforts that were put forth by the CCO resulted in a 0.03 increase in local government funds and that the indigent defense, while they're putting more money in the pot, they're still not taking full responsibility for all payments. So every time they put more money in the pot without assuming that responsibility just means that a bunch of defense lawyers are going to ask for more money. And I'm sure that's the cycle we're going to be in again. Our ask from the CCO was 100%, regardless of dollars, 100%. And again, they failed to do that. So we have a CCO meeting coming up next week. I'm sure there'll be a robust discussion on those topics.
Yeah, and I met with the Ohio Public Defender some time ago. But one thing you all might use in the discussions you're having is, like so many other issues we discuss, the three Cs, you could even throw Dayton or Toledo in there. They're off building huge buildings and hiring people and creating their own defense teams and everything else and then just sending the bill into the public defender's office. And then he tells us people down here in little counties that are just doing our job and doing it right that there's not enough left over for us. That happens every year. And it sounds like under the scenario currently in play, the big Cs get to do that to us again.
Oh, thank you.
So regarding the creation of a new department by the governor and combining six other departments, I would say, look, do you think that's something that makes the thing more effective or more?
Well, I think what he's trying to accomplish is to make sure all those groups are working together effectively and efficiently on those topics and not duplicating or even doing things that might be working against them. It's going to be interesting to see how it plays out because they're all in different state departments right now. And you know, specifically on the Job and Family Services side, you know, we have a county-administered approach to those programs. So with, you know, children and families, which is a department of Job and Families, a program under Department of Job and Family Services, what does that mean to that local administration? Still federal funds. There's just, I mean, I think there's a number of questions that have to play out. So what does that ultimately look like?
Don't you think at the end of the day that would be a more efficient way to?
Yeah, it certainly can. It's just undoing or unraveling some of these things and history and kind of how things have played out over time. You can't undo it like that. And then the last note from the budget I'll give as a highlight is housing. So the governor's proposal includes new tax credits for the development of low-income multifamily rental housing and for affordable single-family housing. It also allows for Ohioans planning to purchase a home that will be able to make a tax-deductible contribution to a home ownership saving account. So you know, that's definitely a topic that we're focusing on. So interested to see how that plays out. And as I said, there's additional information on the executive budget and the review packet.
And so before you move on to the highlights resolutions, I want to make sure that the folks here who have questions, comments, or concerns on the status of the state budget, then give an opportunity to raise those questions or concerns. Anything else, Commissioner Levysey? Commissioner Fix?
It's a long way to go, right? This is just the, just the starting point. It'll be this summer before it's finally done, signed. So you know, we know where we are now and we know the work we need to do to get where we want to be.
Yeah, and I appreciate the work that you guys have done on that. Thank you.
Okay. Highlights, oh, sorry. Highlights of resolutions, the administrative approvals. There's a, the review packet contains a list of those. Resolution review, we have 14 on for the voting meeting today. A couple of note, there is a resolution to approve signing an agreement relating to Meyer and the national opioid litigation. This is another settlement that we have to opt into. So you will have legislation on to approve that. Also a resolution to approve a space use agreement between Teen Works and the Fairfield County Commissioners for a small amount of space at the Workforce Center. Programming aligns and makes sense. Rick, want to add anything?
Yeah, I'm trying to get everything under one, under one roof, literally. So Teen Works provides our CCMEP programming for JFS. And they actually work with some of our high school students that are already in our workforce center programming. But they work with a lot of other students that are. So they have them all located in one spot. They're currently located by Meyer. So it's not too far up the road. And they'll be able to access to, they'll be using classes there and work with the navigator. So just a lot of synergies there. So we'll be deciding to see how this moves forward.
Thank you. We also have a resolution to approve a change order. The second change order to a contract with Sauer for the jail water project. Hopefully that will bring that project to a conclusion. And then lastly, the resolution we talked about earlier, the 2023 Cooperative Agreement for Funding Allocation to Acquire Agricultural Easements Through the Clean Ohio Local Agricultural Easement Purchase Program. Those are the highlights of the resolutions. Is there any budget update?
No, I think this is.
Okay, thank you. Recognition, County Auditor Dr. Carrie Brown. Thank the County Auditor's team for their tremendous show of teamwork in supporting Pickway, Athens, Franklin, Delaware, Butler, Butler, and Logan Counties. Rochelle, would you take the calendar review, please?
Absolutely. So the Burn Union High School has a project-based learning model presentation this February, this week, on February 9th at 6:00 p.m. It's at the Burn Union High School. It's called Be You Next, and it's regarding the kids designing a new building, their next building that they would be building.
What's the nature of that invitation? I don't understand.
So Angela Cryle shared this with us. She had asked for certificates for these students that have been participating in this. So they've been, they'll be able to make a presentation about what the next Burn Union School should look like, what it should include. So getting that feedback from that student level. And so this is where they'll make their presentation. So when she asked for the certificates, she also made an invitation for you all to attend.
Understood, thank you.
MCJDC Board of Trustees Meeting and Joint Board of Commissioners Meetings are both February 10th at 9:00 and 10:30.
Can we stay on that one for a minute? Commissioner Fix, you are conflicted on that, as I understand it.
On Friday the 10th? I am planning to be there. To the, to the Joint Board of Commissioners, not the Board of Trustees.
I understand. I don't know where I got it up at some point. You were not.
There was a time, but I'm good.
Well, I'm glad that worked out because I, no, I am. I mean, I think that meeting is a big deal. And I would certainly understood if you couldn't make it like so many that I don't make. But it'd be better if you were. Looking forward to it. Sounds like it.
Great, Rochelle.
The Transit Amendment to Support Public Transit is February 10th. That is West Wheeling behind the Government Services Building. Between 11:00 and 1:00, they are giving up pre-lube rights.
And just stay on that for a minute. I'm going to get out of MCJDC as soon as possible and join Ani and hopefully others. I think we're going to make the, well, the noon run on that. I think that would be helpful for folks to see what's going on and that aspect of public transit on private.
I am unfortunately conflicted on that one.
All right. Last one, Rochelle. The Emergency Services Facility brand opening is February 14th at 3365 Old Thomas Road in Carroll. So this is more familiarly known as the Swat Building. But Emergency Services Facility is the name that the sheriff is currently using. So in case that throws you any of the invitation.
I'm like, if I haven't already received that or if I received that invitation on my calendar and I rejected it, send it to me again. I promise I'll.
Thank you.
You know, we've, it's on our calendar. Okay.
Unless he's rejected it.
Which could happen.
Are you ready for correspondence?
Yes, please.
A press release from Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development dated February 1st titled Fairfield County and Ohio State Partnering to Update Act of Transportation Plan. A journal entry from the Ohio Department of Transportation dated January 24th regarding order to initiate reappraisal for tax year 2025. County Commissioners Association of Ohio Legislature Alert dated February 1st. Governor Dwyane releases fiscal year 2024-2025 executive budget proposal that addresses key CCAO priorities. A letter of credit from People's Bank regarding Artex Oil Company. Newsletter e-link Winter 2023 Fairfield County Job and Family Services. Memo from County Auditor Dr. Carrie Brown, February 3rd. Subjects order to initiate reappraisal, homestead program eligibility request, and DACO partnership. That's it.
Thank you, Rochelle. Jail population last week was 231 with 18 of those being contracted placements. The sheriff reported this morning that he's at 237 with 19 of those being contracted. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Move on to all business and I'll ask Commissioner Levysey if there's any all business you would like to address. Commissioner Fix?
So two things have gone on since we last met. We did attend the Sutter Town Hall. And I appreciate the one attached trustees bringing people together so that it could be a conversation, at least a start of a conversation. Felt like it could have been done a little differently. That would have perhaps provided more real information rather than just kind of stirring up more questions. But there'll be time for that as. But there'll be time for that as the months go by. Had a chance to meet with the folks from Junior Achievement in Columbus who are working to reach out into Fairfield County. So I was a junior team a kid 40 years ago, and it's kind of painful to say that, but when I was in high school, I participated in Junior Achievement, and it was a really cool program then. And they've taken it to an incredible new level. They're working with grade school kids, middle school kids, and high school kids. Had a really interesting program, and they're interested in exploring opportunities here in Fairfield County. Also had an interesting conversation with a group called American Homes for Rent. Their business model is intriguing in that they're not, they're moving away from buying individual houses in existing neighborhoods and looking to build an entire development of rental homes. And their claim is that the market is asking for this. It'll be interesting to see how that plays out. They're right now working primarily in the northwest part of the county, but just successful there. I'm sure they'll seek other opportunities around the county. As Rick mentioned, I had a productive conversation with our state Senator Tim Schaefer. Very productive, very positive, and he wants to be helpful. And that's a, that's a good place for us to be with him. And finally, today I had a meeting with the folks from Harkam House, and I continue to be impressed by the work that they do and how they're doing it. They're still kind of with their new director getting their feet under them, but it feels like they're making an impact with our prosecutor, our Sheriff's Department, local police departments, Job and Family Services Group, the Child Protective Services. It was a, it's good to hear, you know, progress being made, so it was positive. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fix. Commissioner Levysey, under poll business.
I think that, I know.
I'm not going to do anything on that either, under new business, Commissioner Levysey.
So next Monday, I will have my very first board meeting, Governor's Executive Board of the Board. So I'll see how that goes and I'll report back Tuesday when we ever, if we have a meeting.
We'll look forward to hearing about it. Again, congratulations to you for that honor. Under new business, Commissioner Fix?
So coming up this week, we have a One Ohio meeting tomorrow. Starting to get some traction there and feel like we're making progress, so I'll be able to report back on that next week. Also, Jeremiah Up, County Engineer Jeremiah Up, and I will be meeting with William Murdoch and some of his team at Morpsy to talk about our transportation improvement district priorities and the perception that Morpsy is servicing primarily Franklin County and the city of Columbus and that perhaps they could put more of their resources toward the outlined counties, particularly now that, you know, Licking County is going to be the home for a pretty big project and we're going to feel the effects of that as well. So I'll be interested to see how that goes and report back. Been asked to meet with one of the Liberty Township Trustees. They're putting on a town hall, I guess, on development, right? The Housing Symposium that we started and the conversations that are proceeding from that, they're taking that to heart and want to get engaged and work on a land use plan and things like that. So working on a video that was, is part of our regular monthly communication is going to be around that development, you know, the Housing Symposium kind of topics. And then I'm going to add a little bit to that to deal specifically with Liberty Township because when they have that meeting, we'll be in Key West. But meeting with Don Keller this Friday to start that conversation and bring him up to speed on that toolbox that we're working on building for the township. Mentioned later this week, or early next week, rather, meeting with former Congressman Savers, the leader of the Ohio Chamber, to give their support for our workforce development program. And I'm hopeful to attend the airport meeting next Monday. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't really have any new business. I just have a thought that I, I can't remember if I previously shared this, but I'm, it's been on my mind a lot lately and I wanted to share. I mean, it seems to be kind of human nature to look back at some time in the past as when things were good, whether that's maybe when your kids were young and you had a great time with them, that, those were the good times. Or maybe back when you were in college, or those were the good times. And thinking about that in the context of our responsibility here in terms of running Fairfield County as a local government, you know, I just want to tell you, the good times are right now. They're not 20 years ago, it's not 40 years ago, it's not 20 years from now, it's right now. And I'm encouraged by that. I mean, there are certainly challenges and concerns and things that we're all working on and that's just doing your job, but my goodness, we are so fortunate. And I just think it's healthy once in a while to say, okay, wait a minute. You know, I'm reminded of Will Rogers. Things ain't as good as they used to be and they probably never was. I mean, these are the good times. I appreciate you all for being a part of those. Is there any other issue or item that anybody would like to bring the attention to the Commission under new business?
Earlier, we mentioned the order from the Department of Taxation. The request for proposals for the 2025 Sex Annual Update will be issued on Thursday. And that includes for the first time ever sections about innovation and customer service. So we're excited to see what that might yield. And just a point of reference, Licking and Franklin will have their sex annual in '23, the collections in '24. So that is happening for them right now.
I'm surprised. I guess I hadn't realized that in the past, that different counties might be on different schedules for the implementation of that.
Rotation schedule. Typically, when a neighboring county has that going on, then some questions come to the neighbor as well. So we're well-prepared for that and have been helping other counties with their statistical analysis as well.
Thank you. Any other issue or item that anybody would like to bring the attention to the Commission under new business? Here we go, we'll move on to our voting pattern.
If you would please rise if you're an angel and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, in the name of this law, liberty, and justice for all.
Rochelle, do we have any announcements?
There are no announcements.
Look for a motion to approve a minutes for January 31st, 2023.
Submit.
Second.
Please call roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0 from the Commission's office. Resolution 2023-2.7.a, a resolution to approve signing an agreement relating to Meyer Incorporated as presented by Legal Counsel for National Opioid Litigation.
Submit. Second.
Please call roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0 from Fairfield County Clerk of Court's Legal Division. Resolution 2023-2.7.b, a resolution approving an account-to-account transfer in a major object expense category.
Submit. Second.
Discussion. Would you like to say the minor object?
Glad you felt the need to bring it up now.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Motion passes 3-0 from Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development. Resolution 2023-2.7.c, approval for a space use agreement between Fairfield County Commissioners and Teen Works LLC and the Fairfield County Workforce Center.
Submit. Second.
Discussion.
Go ahead and be touched on there, you're.
Further discussion? Please call roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0 from the Fairfield County Engineer. Resolution 2023-2.7.d, a resolution to approve the construction drawings for the CLE12 FAI CR12-0.001 Clear Creek Road Bridge Replacement Project.
Under Fairfield County Engineer, I move items D, E, F, G, H, I, N, J.
Second. Discussion. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0 from Fairfield County Facilities. Resolution 2023-2.7.k, a resolution for approval of change order number two to contract between the Sauer Incorporated and the Fairfield County Commissioners.
Submit. Second.
Discussion. This is being the last change order on this project.
I was going to make this more important about making it to further discussion.
Please call roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0 from Fairfield County Family, Adult, and Children's Councils. Resolution 2023-2.7.l, a resolution to amend the certificate, update receipt line item and request for appropriations for Fund Number 7521.
Submit. Second.
Discussion. Please call roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0 from Fairfield County Soil and Water. Resolution 2023-2.7.m, a resolution to enter into the 2023 Cooperative Agreement for Funding Allocation to Acquire Agricultural Easements through the Clean Ohio Local Agricultural Easement Purchase Program for Fairfield County, Ohio.
Submit. Second.
Discussion.
I would like to thank our legal team and Jonathan Furrush from our Soil and Water Conservation Group and the Ohio Department of Agriculture for their flexibility in admitting these contracts in a way that something we could vote for.
Further discussion? Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0 on payment of bills. Resolution 2023-2.7.n, a resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
Submit. Second.
Discussion. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. The next regular meeting is scheduled for February 14th at 9:00 AM.
On behalf of the Commissioners, we again want to thank all of our elected officials and representatives who endorsed us in attending our meeting this evening and this morning, which may have been a little more convenient for some of perhaps all of you. Is that any other issue or item that anybody would like to bring the attention to the Commission at this time?
Commissioner Davis, so earlier you spoke of good times right now. I think that's absolutely true. And I think what makes Fairfield County exceptional is because of the collaboration, the willingness of everyone who elected or otherwise to be cooperative in how we move this county forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other issue or item?
Here we go, now we have another motion.
Listen to it, Jerry. Second.
I got a motion to adjourn in a second. I wasn't very thing about saying, I, I, I'm going to say it, son. Motion carries. The Commission is adjourned and we do thank you all for coming.